Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June twenty-four, twenty-four regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission and call the meeting to order. And if everyone would please stand for the invocation this morning, it'll be given by Pastor Christopher Williams, Senior from the Yorktown Missionary Baptist Church. And after the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come once again to say thank you for the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon all of us. We ask God that you will govern our hearts, our mind, and our tongue as we go through this meeting. We ask your blessing upon our county commissioners. We ask your protection, your power, your love for them. Then God forgive all of us of our sins and wrongdoing. Bless this meeting. Bless us all. We ask these things in your son, Jesus' name. Amen. I think we have several retirees to recognize this morning, but I believe we have two here. Ms. Duncan is here and Deputy Marvin Walker. If you guys will come up front, please. Use this one right here. So, um, good morning. Thank y'all for your service, but we have some, uh, these retirement certificates for you guys. And it reads the Mobile County Commission presents a certificate to Corinne Duncan and yours says Marvin Walker. As wishing, wishing to express the thanks of gratitude for twenty-five years of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. And we wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. And it's signed by all three county commissioners and the county administrator, Eddie Kerr. So congratulations. Marvin's, uh, certificate says twelve years and three months, which is not really accurate. Marvin and I hired on the sheriff's office the same day. We worked together at the Mobile Police Department for many years prior to coming to sheriff's office. Marvin shows twelve years and three months because Marvin took off and served his country across seas in the military for many years. And then came back to the sheriff's office after that break. I just wanted to recognize that. He was a pretty good deputy, not quite as good as, not, not, not quite as good a deputy as I was, but he was okay. We also had several retirees who couldn't be with us today, and that was Christie Mock. She had twelve years and nine months with the sheriff administration. William Baldwin, judicial probate police, uh, I'm sorry, the thirteenth judicial police for seventeen years and five months. Keith Howell Youth Senator Administration for twenty-five years. So I just wanted to mention those as well. Cherie, do we have any speakers this morning?
Yes, sir. We have three people who've signed up to speak this morning, and all three have been reminded that they have five minutes. And all three have been asked to state their name and address for the record. The first is Mr. Frank Harris, who would like to address safety concerns on Dog Lake Boulevard, Dawes Lake Boulevard. Mr. Harris?
Good morning, Mr. Harris. How you doing?
Good morning. My name is Frank Harris. Uh, I only have five minutes, so I'll just do the best I can.
Can you pull the mic down just a little bit?
Okay. I've gotten, I only have five minutes, so I try to talk the best way I can, explain what's going on. I have sent you a brochure, piece of paper that you're looking at now. I'm gonna see if I can read it to you. This is my second time appearing before there at the commission. I first appeared on May twenty-fourth. I'd like it very clear, not a speeding problem in my neighborhood, but a safety issue. I've been trying to address my concern for three years with the traffic engineer, Brad Whitman, I think that's him right there. I've been talking to him. Been no help for me at all whatsoever. Also, I've contacted the acting director, Mr. Sanders. No contact with her. I understand that was a Mr. Kelly Kestley or something was also at one time was director. I've contacted him. No, uh, yeah. Also, I've talked to Mr. Dewitt on May twenty-eighth. Still haven't got no results. He told me he'll get back to me. I have not gotten it heard in the works from him at all, matter of fact. I understand the last time I hear that was probably a grant, but the grant's not gonna help. Who, who knows? They said the sheriff department has a grant. What make them gonna come out and check a speeding in my neighborhood? That's not gonna work like that. There's more urgent things than that. Now, I must admit that they did put a sign up there saying ten miles an hour. That's not gonna help me at all, matter of fact. But next to my driveway, that's a problem. It's twenty miles an hour. The sign is very confusing to me, and I live there, matter of fact. Now, I almost got hit several times. I had a letter. I had bought my, I had a blind person living with me. And I brought him there to talk to do it. Nobody would see us. I think Ms. Moore, I think that was her name, we asked for her, asked for you. No reaction whatsoever. And I was here on May twenty-eighth, and you said you're gonna get back to me. I hadn't heard anything. I've been working this for three years. It does not take that long to correct something. This is simple. This is a matter of life and death. When I tried to rig these, I had to do these little orange cones out there. Now, they claim they can't do so much. I've looked on some of the neighborhood and stuff like that. Gold Mine, they have strips and things, rumble strips and stuff like that. You could use grue pavement and stuff like that. You can use little pencil type thing, like the lanterns or anything they call it. You could put stuff like that. Meet with me, and so we can see we'll work out a solution rather than just not do nothing at all. What else should I do? Is I'm coming to the wrong place? What should I do next? Somebody get killed? This should be preventative thing. This is a safety issue. I went down to the department agent. What they told me is call it, uh, call somebody, like TV station, something like that. I shouldn't have to do that. Now, I wanna file some on the American Disability Act. Can I do that through the city or the county? Because this person almost got killed. This is a repeat issue. This is, this is a sharp curve. I have not, nobody had not, I had, the commissioner had not come in and talked to me and look at this curve. You need to sit yourself. It's a dangerous curve. Mr. Whitman told me have the vegetation cut back. It was only six inches tall. It wasn't a vegetation issue. It's the way the highway designed. I'm not asking to spend millions, millions of dollars and reconstruct the highway. Just make it liberal so I can, or, or cut my grass and go to my mailbox. It's dangerous. Okay? Do anybody have suggestions what I can do next to get this done?
I think I'm gonna have, uh, our county engineer or either Brad address your concerns. But let me, let me address something that you accuse me of real quickly. If I tell you I'm gonna get back with you, that doesn't necessarily, I'm not a traffic engineer. That doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna come out there myself, but I do believe that since you were here the last time, there have been several visits from Brad to that location. And I also want to express too that, um, I, I know for a fact that, that there have been deputies new, on numerous occasions prior to your last visit and since your last visit in your neighborhood, trying to figure out exactly what the, uh, the safety concerns are. And the, after numerous hours of sitting there and having very little contact with anyone violating any traffic laws or, or driving unsafely in your neighborhood. They eventually had to move on to, to other things. These, these grants that they work doing, doing traffic requires documentation that they were working. And they said that they, they couldn't even make contact with anyone in your neighborhood because there wasn't enough traffic.
Okay, why couldn't they contact me then? I'm available. I left my phone number, I have email address and stuff like that.
Who, the deputies? I don't think it's necessary for them to contact you, but I'll assure you they've been there.
Well, they should. Talk to me, see what, look, why can't we just sit down like gentlemen, men and ladies and work out a solution? That's what, that's what it's all about.
Well, I think I'm gonna let.
Let, let's, let's have a roundtable discussion. That's what I'm asking for. Be in favor of me. This person almost got hit. I, I have a letter showing, my last thing I was here, I had a letter showing he almost got hit, matter of fact. I have brochures. I pass all this stuff out to each neighborhood person, matter of fact, on the commission. And show how deep that curve is and stuff like that. Come to me. Talk to me. See, I'm the only one really affected by that. We have a hundred and thirteen people or so live in that community. Most of them got three cars. They have to pass through there, and there's no outlet. A nine and seven center car basically passes my neighborhood, matter of fact. You tell me that's not, it's no problem, no problem. You can do anything you can do. And I go to other neighborhoods and seen rumble strips and stuff like that. Uh, signs on the highway, painting and stuff like that, no speed limit and stuff like that. I've seen lights and things, solar lights up there, you know. I've seen all that. But what's with me? And why I can't get that? I was gonna try to do a circle driveway to help with that. Can't do that. I have a safety tank. Will not allow me to do that. I've done everything I can do. What, what, try to get hurt or killed or something like that? What, 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 what should I do?
I think.
It got to be, I can get, should be a waiver or something. You saying it's not nothing else they can do. They have variation of barriers and stuff like that. They have waivers.
I think your five minutes has expired, and if you don't mind, I would like to let the county engineer address your concerns and explain what's, what we have done to try to, uh, satisfy you.
Make it safety. That's all I'm asking for. Not satisfying the safety.
Okay, so, um, Brad and I both have, have gone out and looked at the road several times ourselves. Brad has met with Mr. Harris. I have not met with Mr. Harris myself. But he and I both have made repeated visits out there, and Brad had recommended some improvements, which we have had installed. And the road is appropriately signed now. But Brad and I will be happy to go meet with Mr. Harris again and sit down and maybe discuss some options for some other things that maybe Mr. Harris or the Property Owners Association might could do to improve that entrance, improve his mailbox, and address some of his concerns.
Is there, has the county done, or is there anything further that you see, Kim or Brad, that we could do to make this safer, or have we done everything in, in your opinion as a county engineer? Is there anything?
Yes, sir. The road is signed appropriately. And Brad did go after his initial site business and did add another sign or two, and Brad can confirm that for me. But Brad made the appropriate adjustments after we first got notified. And there is nothing, the road is fine the way it is. It's appropriate for the speed, the fifteen mile an hour. It's just the people are not abiding by the signs.
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Harris mentioned rumble strips. Is this, this is something really that a neighborhood would have to agree to, the homeowners association. Would that, is that correct? Because it affects everyone.
It affects everyone, and rumble strips are good that they bring your attention to the road. They slow you down. But they're very loud and typically in subdivisions, they're, they're not a good fit in a subdivision because of the noise.
Mr. Harris, let, let me, I'm gonna say this, and when I say that I'm gonna be back in touch with you, that doesn't necessarily mean that I am. But I do believe that Kim and Brad will be in touch with you. You have his contact information to sit down and discuss any, and I thought, I think Brad has kinda discussed some of the options that you have that are outside the county's control that could be, uh, handled through your HOA in your subdivision. But matter of fact, let me just say this. I, I, I'll get with Kim and Brad, and we'll set up a meeting. And if we need to come to your house to save you from coming down here, I will gladly come out there. I, I don't have a problem with that. The only reason I haven't is because I've asked them to, and it sounds like they're trying to. But I'll have a time that's convenient for Brad and Kim and myself, and maybe even Ricky, if he doesn't mind, to all come out and, and have a meeting with you, if that, if that's okay. All right. Yes, sir. Thank you. Sorry, this is such a difficult situation, and I'm sorry that you have to keep coming down. But I, I feel like that, um, our team here at the county is doing everything that we can do to try to alleviate whatever concerns you may have there, so.
We have two more speakers this morning. Um, the second is Cindy Knowlton with the Extension Service.
Good morning.
Cindy Knowlton, County Extension Coordinator at the John Archer Ag Center on ten seventy Schillinger Road North, Mobile. Good morning, commissioners. I'd like to introduce to you Morgan O'Neill is with us this morning. She is a junior at Auburn and is one of our two interns at our author, office this summer. She is studying agriculture science, and her interest and goal is to, uh, be, uh, or participate in urban farming and, and hydroponics. Also, her project this summer is working with women in agriculture around Mobile County. She's going in and interviewing them and taking photos, and they will be highlighted in our general statewide extension website. Also, we have another intern, Ariana Howard, who is also a junior at Auburn. And her degree is in nutrition dietetics, and she is looking forward to becoming a registered dietitian. Couple of things I wanted to mention is our watermelon promotion is this week. So we'll be visiting our county offices here at Government Plaza on Thursday morning. And we have a big team. Somehow I ended up with like thirteen or fourteen of us coming. So I might end up having to divide them, and we'll hit all the floors. But that's always a treat for us to come out as a thank you for your continual support. I also had Cherie give each of you a folder with some of our upcoming events. We've had through a grant, our weather wise workshop, the one coming up in July in Bayou La Batry. That's July twelfth. Uh, what we do is we do a short program with our citizens. Whoever wants to register, it's free, and they sit through the program, and in return, they receive a, um, NOAA weather radio that's been already, uh, what's the word? Already has the channel and the language and all that. It's been programmed. And so we've done two prior already. We had one at Sims Library back in May. And just last week, we held another weather wise workshop at Via Health Center here in Midtown. And, uh, we have another one I want to schedule in Mount Vernon in August. Also in the packet, you'll see our Master Gardener Impact Sheet for twenty twenty-three. And I bring that to your attention because Mobile County, the Master Gardener Program, we're in the top three with Master Gardener programs in the state. We're either number two or number three next to Baldwin and Jefferson Counties. And I just want you to know that they're doing a lot of, of good programming and having a lot of impact throughout our county. And we're getting ready to start our intern program in August. We just finished our interviews with those, uh, candidates. And then also I included our June newsletter, just for some highlights. Are there any questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yes.
Welcome to your interns, and we hope they have a, a very, a wonderful experience, and I know you will. We have an excellent extension service, so you're in the right place.
And, uh, Ms. Corinne, I'm gonna give her a war eagle if you don't mind.
We have one more speaker this morning, Pastor Valeria Green of Azalea City, C D C, and their subject matter is child support reform.
Good morning. Pastor Belina Green, six oh three Delaware Street, Mobile, Alabama, in the Downey Bay community. I come to you this morning with good news. We're working on child support reform. We have seen a direct impact from the women asking for help in this area. We've partnered with the DA's office, and Clay Rossi is gonna come and speak to us. Also, I'm in the League of Women Voters, so, and I'm event chair, and they partnered with us too to bring a discussion about this. We invite you July seventeenth from twelve to two for lunch. And we're gonna talk about child support reform and what needs to be done with the law to strengthen it and to advocate for some women. And we also have a couple of men that suffered with this. So I invite you out to come out for change, and we're looking for a movement with the women. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
All right, Eddie, before we get started, I have one, uh, quick thing that I wanna do real quick before we, uh, start the meeting. And I wanna recognize one of our employees here who's, uh, doing a fantastic job. Before I got this letter, I even know that he was, he does a fantastic job for the county, and we're proud of him. And I had, uh, Matthew Barcliffe ask Ken Williams to come down here today. And I wanna read this letter. If you wanna, if you wanna stand up and, uh, so everybody knows who you are, you're pretty hard to miss. But, um, this letter came from the Burton Property Group, Ken, and I just wanted to read this letter. And, uh, and I'll make sure also that, uh, Matthew gets a copy of it for your file. But I, I just wanted you to be here today so that I could read this letter in front of the, uh, audience here and abroad on internet and everything so that they, uh, know what a fantastic job you're doing. And again, I already know that you do a fantastic job from our interactions. But, um, I, I was wondering though, uh, do you, do you dress like that every day, or do you sometimes wear a jogging suit to work? I've heard that sometimes you wear a jogging suit. So it says, Dear Commissioners, I'm writing to commend the service and support provided by Mr. Ken Williams. Throughout our recent interactions, Mr. Williams has consistently demonstrated responsive and help, and helpfulness, which have significantly improved our response times to new industries that we are recruiting to Mobile County. I am sure you hear too often areas of government needing improvement. Let this be a letter of commendation. I am sincerely appreciative and notice his efforts to respond quickly to our team. Please extend our gratitude to Mr. Williams for his outstanding efforts. I hope to, I hope he has continued, he has continued to be acknowledged. I'm sorry. Let me start that sentence over. Please extend my gratitude to Mr. Williams for his outstanding efforts. And I hope his contribution continues to be acknowledged and appreciated. And this is from Philip Burd, Burton with Burton Properties. And if, for those who don't know, I think, uh, where this comes from is the tremendous amount of help, Ken, that you've provided them and, uh, uh, being very speedy and getting, uh, things approved for the South Alabama Logistics Park. So thank you for coming down. I know you're very busy, but I, I thought this was important enough to, to have you come down and so that we could recognize you. So thank you so much for your hard work, and they thank you as well. Mr. Carr?
Good morning, commissioners. Item one, approve a list of claims.
So moved. Second?
Two, hold public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
This public hearing is now in session. Are there any comments for or against, or or against? Hearing, non-public hearing is now closed.
Three, adopt resolution amending the Mobile County Commission conference and meeting schedule as follows to cancel the conference on Wednesday, July third, and hold a combined conference and meeting on Monday, July eighth.
So moved. Second?
Four, adopt resolution affirming the county's intent to comply with the Construction Best Management Practices Plan for the Mobile County Aquatic Center regarding the city of Mobile's issuance of the land disturbance permit pending legal review.
So moved. Second?
Five, authorize advertising for bids, three-year detention, lock, inspection, and cleaning for various locations.
So moved. Second?
Six, authorize advertising for bids for new electronic controlled access gate and fence for camps two, three, and four.
So moved. Second?
Seven, award bid to Taylor Sutton Service for Mobile Government Plaza Emergency Generator Repairs Radiator for their total bid in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents.
So moved. Second?
Eight, award bid to Tindall Construction for Michael Square License Commission Installation of Tag ATM for their total bid in the amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars.
So moved. Second?
Nine, reject bid for Mobile County, Mobile Government Plaza Pocket Park bid exceeded available budget.
So moved. Second?
Ten, approve Mobile County District Three recommendation to reappoint Frank Evert as the, a member of the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Authority of Mobile County for a term of six years.
So moved. Second?
Eleven, approve memorandum of agreement among Mobile County Sheriff's Office, Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, and the Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area to designate the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency as the fiscal agent for the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved. Second?
Twelve, approve assignment to F S B Architects and Engineers for renovation to the tenth floor Mobile County Commission Executive Meeting Room for Programming, Design, Bidding, and Project Administration in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
So moved. Second?
Thirteen, approve renewal of lease agreement with the Tanner Williams Civic and Historical Society for the Tanner Williams Community Park for ten years with a renewal period of ten years for a total of twenty.
So moved. Second?
Fourteen, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved. Second?
Fifteen, approve renewal of agreement with narcotic stealth tracking mapping software from Covert Track for the sheriff's office in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So moved. Second?
Sixteen, approve change order number one with Rogers and Willard for Michael Square Revenue Commission restroom expansion and renovation for the construction of an additional office. The change order will increase the contract by twenty-five thousand, eighty-four dollars and eighty cents, and the new contract total will be eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and one dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry.
So we added an office in the bathroom?
Commissioner, no, we're just adding an additional office at the Michael Square.
Second?
Number seventeen was voted at conference. Eighteen, approve agreement with the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty. Eighteen, approve agreement with the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals for to facilitate the identification and coordination of assistance and animal rescue efforts in order to maximize the welfare of animals and their caretakers before, during, and after a major incident, and to minimize the loss of life and animal suffering that might occur following such an incident.
So moved, second.
Nineteen, approve facility usage agreement with Bishop State Community College for the use of its Center for Advanced Manufacturing Area on October eighteenth, twenty-third, and twenty-eighth for poll worker training in anticipation of the Alabama general election at no cost to the county.
So moved, second.
Twenty, adopt resolution approving request of probate court to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare items as store plus property, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved, second.
Twenty-one, approve contract with Mobile Area Veterans Day Commission in the amount of five thousand dollars for its annual Veterans Day celebration.
So moved, second.
Twenty-two, approve agreement among Mobile County, the Sheriff's Office, and City of Pritchard to house City of Pritchard prisoners at a cost of fifty dollars per day.
So moved, second.
Twenty-three, approve three-year office trailer rental agreement with William Scotsman under the current purchasing cooperative Omnia contract for Camp One, first year estimated delivery and installation charges in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, twenty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents, and the second and third years at fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars for the Environmental Services Department.
I mean that, how much do these trailers cost to purchase?
I'd have to get that quote to you, Commissioner, this seems to be quicker, and they.
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now? Good morning, I'll have to get that quote and share with you, we just thought it was more cost-effective to lease for three years, they'll, they'll be responsible for it while we determine what's the best course for additional office space.
I was just curious, because I mean that's leased for three years and it's two hundred thousand dollars, and I just can in my mind imagine that one of those trailers and the maintenance for three years would cost us more than that, I'm just, I was just curious, but thank you.
How, excuse me, how large is this trailer?
This is a large trailer, six offices and a conference room, that will serve as a central office for multiple departments, quite frankly, parks and environmental services.
Very large, okay.
I might, I might would ask that before we vote on this, that maybe, could you maybe get us those, is this, is this an emergency we need it? Any, before the next meeting, is there any way that we could maybe come up with a cost analysis of what it would cost to purchase the trailer and the maintenance for three years and see if it's, I'm sorry to ask and not be ahead of the game on it, but I just realized it, but.
Happy to table this and share more information with you for the next meeting.
If that's the will of the commission.
So was, was this subject to a request for proposal, bid, or? It's off of a, a bid list. It's all, okay, so it's all. It's a purchasing cooperative.
Are you okay with?
If you want to.
Do we need to extend the bid?
That's an, an ongoing cooperative agreement, we just purchased it off a bid list.
Oh, I see, okay.
We just, we just didn't think we needed the, the structure, this large office trailer permanently, because we hope that within three years, a building can be constructed at Camp One.
Well, I just, I guess my thoughts are even if there is a building built to replace it, we would have it on hand, and we could use it at other locations, maybe in the future. If you don't mind, I'd appreciate doing that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We'll carry that over.
Twenty-four, authorize acceptance of the program information license agreement with Freddie Mac for DPA One for the Mobile County Down Payment Assistance Program through the Grants Department. This agreement will allow the program's information to be accessible on Freddie Mac's website at no cost to the county.
So moved, second.
Twenty-five, approve contract amendment number three with Moffett Nickel for Project Dauphin Island Causeway Shoreline Restoration Project to add additional construction engineering and inspection services.
So moved, second.
Twenty-six, adopt resolution amending the Certificate of Incorporation of Mobile County Hospital Board to amend the manner in which members of the board are nominated.
What's the rationale, this one?
We have someone from, let's say, one, but some of the entities have, are no longer exist.
Good morning, Anna Catherine Fincher from the University of South Alabama. So currently the nominations come from our USA Health Foundation, our Research and Technology Corporation, and then the Board of Trustees. The Health Foundation no longer is in existence, and so they're up for nomination, so we want to change it to where the Board of Trustees will be the one to submit the nominations. The Research and Technology Corporation already falls under the Board of Trustees, so this way it'll just clean up that process since the Health Foundation no longer exists.
So basically the appointing authorities under the other one no longer exist, and you wanna replace them with the correct.
Just the Board of Trustees now, correct, yes.
Okay.
I think we're the appointing authority.
Correct, so those nominations would be submitted to y'all.
For nominations.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
So moved, second.
Twenty-seven, approve appropriation contract with Family Counseling Center of Mobile Doing Business as Lifelines Counseling Services in the total amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for its annual Bay Area Brunch Fest fundraising event with funds divided as follows.
So moved, second.
Twenty-eight, approve appropriation contract with opportunity for entertainings, entertainers and performing arts in the amount of five thousand from District One Education Funds for its Mob Music Festival and Alabama Hip-Hop Week.
So moved, second.
Twenty-nine, approve professional services contract with Studio Rotan in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars from District One Commission Funds to provide interior design and planning services for Africa Town Hall and Food Bank.
So moved, second.
Thirty, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Monroe Lane Grade Drain Basin pave.
So moved, second.
Thirty-one, approve supplemental agreement number four with Frank Turner Construction for Project Tanner Williams Road Additional Lanes for the removal and disposal of slotted drain, pipe, and concrete.
So moved, second.
Thirty-two, award bid to H.O. Weaver and Sons for Project Bush Lane and Carroll Plantation Road for their low bid in the amount of three million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
So moved, second.
Thirty-three, approve preliminary and final plat of Boutwell Estates.
So moved, second.
And Commissioners, we have two add-ons this morning. Add-on number one, approve commission district project to furnish and deliver two loads of sand clay to the Moa Museum of Veterans Park for the estimated cost of one hundred and sixty dollars from District One Commission Funds.
So moved, second.
Number two, approve commission district project sponsorship agreement with the City of Sims in the amount of one thousand dollars from District Two Commission Funds for its annual Independence Day celebration event.
So moved, second.
Item thirty-four, commission announcements and or comments.
Commissioner, Commissioner. There are no more announcements. I think we have an indigent care board meeting.
We do. Item thirty-five, approve request for motion to adjourn until July eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved, second.
We'll stand adjourned until July twenty-eighth, twenty-four, no, July eighth, sorry. And I think we have an indigent care board meeting, call it meeting order.
One, approve minutes of the meeting of May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved, second.
Two, accept report from Mobile County Commission of the balance of the Indigent Care Fund at May thirty-first, funds available, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
So moved, second.
Three, approve request for motion adjourned until July twenty-second.
So moved, second.
We'll stand adjourned until July twenty-second.